This is the morning meeting of July 29, 2020. Carl, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Here.
Youdaly?
Here.
Wheeler? Fritz?
Here, thank you. We will first hear from the city attorney on the rules of order and decorum, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerks Office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter that's being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mayor Wheeler is at the press conference and will join us in a little while. So in the meantime, could we please start with communications, the first item?
Item 618, request of John Pacheco to address council regarding injury received by the Portland Police Bureau and federal agents.
Good morning, welcome. You have three minutes. We just need your name, we don't need your address. Appreciate you taking the time to join us today.
Commissioner, I see he did get registered, but I don't see him on the line right now. Was that Gayla's taking Keela's place this morning? Gayla, is that what you've got?
Yes, that's what I see too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, well then, if the person joins us later, we can see if we can go back. Otherwise, please read the next item.
619, request of Hyung Nam to address council regarding crowd control policing.
Good morning. My name is Hyung Nam. I'm with the Portland Metro People's Coalition. And I'm here to say that we issued this letter addressed to Mayor Wheeler, but CC to the entire city council on July 16. And the title of it is Stop Cop Riots. It has been now signed by 66 community organizations, 86th clergy, and over 1,300 individuals. And we still have not received any response while Mayor Wheeler is going on national media complaining about the feds who are doing the exact same thing his local cops have been doing to us for several years now. In fact, there is a settlement that's going to be happening from August 4th where his cops shot one of the anti-fascist protesters in the head with a flashbang grenade. And we're going to have to spend general funds settling that settlement. I believe the millionaire mayor should be paying for this himself personally when he's not taking responsibility as a commissioner of police and allowing this to happen repeatedly. And in fact, our police have been protecting far-right fascists and attacking everyone else, including journalists, medics, and so on. So I want to just highlight a few things from this letter. We demand an end to falsely declaring gatherings to be civil disturbances or unlawful assemblies or riots and using these kinds of indiscriminate attacks endangering public health. We want to end the false narrative that the protesters are being violent. We want the end of all these crowd-controlled munitions that we know have been harmful for many years now. We demand compliance with all court orders on the use of tear gas and so on. We demand an end to targeting ACLU and National Lawyers Guild legal observers, medics, and journalists. We demand the elimination of the rapid response team and CERT, the SWAT team, and all associated units that work on crowd control. These units did not exist before the DHS, before 9/11. There's, it's under a false pretext that we have these kinds of militarized units. We need to end them. There are several more things that I want to point out there, but with the remaining time, I also want to say that we need to put Sergeant Pete Simpson of the Criminal Intelligence Unit to testify on record about all his communications with the feds because Trump has been targeting us since back during our days during the ICE protests. And we need to know exactly what's going on. As a member of the Budget Advisory Committee, I can't even find out exactly how they're funded. The police budget document is completely misleading and we can't even get transparency on that yet. So we need to move ahead with reviewing these specialty units and defund the police. Seattle is calling for 50% defunding the police with seven out of nine city councillors supporting this to make it veto-proof and using participatory budgeting to reinvest. We need to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And hopefully with the federal government leaving, we can start taking care of business here as we were in the process of doing. And as you know, that we do have an item on the council agenda this afternoon. I would imagine we'll hear from you again. Thank you for being here. We cannot do the consent agenda because there's several emergency items on it and it's too soon to do the 9:45 time certain. So the only item on the regular agenda that we could do is 629. Are you ready, Commissioner Youdaly?
I'm sorry, no. We, I just didn't get that communication early enough to get staff prepared, so.
It looks like we have Jerry Caruso. But okay, well, in that case, unfortunately, we're going to need to take a short recess because the mayor has asked that we don't do the time certain until he gets back.
Okay. PBOT staff ready to present on street vacation?
Brilliant, thank you so much. Carla, please read item 629.
629, vacate a portion of Southwest Third Avenue south of Southwest Arthur Street subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Thank you, Commissioner Youdaly.
Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of this request is provide access to a site for the construction of a new office building in response to Development Review's conclusion that the building plan as designed did not support an exit-only driveway on Southwest Arthur Street as required. Here to provide details and answer any questions is PBOT Right-of-Way Agent Jerry Caruso. Welcome, Jerry.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Jerry Caruso with Right-of-Way Act of Transportation. And before you, it was a street vacation request, as Commissioner Youdaly mentioned, for Southwest Third Avenue. This petition was initiated by the petitioner's Benjamin Eater, David Eater of the law firm Dumel, Ull, and Eater. It's an ordinance to vacate a 20 by 100-foot strip on the east side of Southwest Third Avenue. The petitioner owns the property, abutting the east side of the street area and the vacated portion of this street area will revert back to the petitioner's parcel. The original, if I could have the slides presented up on the screen, thank you. And if you could just move to the next screen, please. If we could get to the next screen or move the slide one, thank you. So that is a depiction of the street area that is going to be vacated. And then, next slide, please. And that is an overall aerial view of the surrounding area. Please move to the next slide, please. Another aerial view. Next slide, please. And then next slide, that is the assessors map. So the original site plan depicted an exit onto Southwest Arthur Street and Development Review was not supportive of access onto Southwest Arthur and suggested that the petitioners present a new site plan and pursue a street vacation where they can move the building 20 feet to the east, provide two-way access from Southwest Third, and provide the desired onsite parking. Next slide, please. And here is a depiction of the current site plan that was revised, showing the access and the parking and the building moved to the northwest corner of the parcel. Next slide, please. And again, another depiction highlighting the street area that is being vacated. The notifications were sent out to various bureaus, agencies, utilities, neighborhood and business associations. Only one objection was received from Active Transportation that cited that the that the loss of a public on-street parking on Southwest Third is a hindrance to the city's ability to manage the transportation system. However, in response to Active Transportation's objection, you know, the city's goals need to be appropriately applied on a citywide scale and need to be considered as they relate to site-specific conditions. And in this particular case, the proposed two-way traffic driveway would be required with or without the street vacation as it's the standard width of two-way access. In addition, the loss of the one parking spot on Southwest Third Avenue is being replaced or the closure of the access on Southwest Arthur Street gives access, gives remain, one additional parking space for, that will be added to Southwest Arthur, so the loss on Southwest Third is really negated. The current, the possibility also to extend Southwest Arthur further to meet Southwest, if I could go to the next slide, I'm sorry. This is another depiction showing the width of the existing width, which is 85 feet, and the proposed right-of-way after the vacation of a 65-width right-of-way. Next slide, please. Here are some photos. This is, and the next slide, please, this is looking north up Southwest Third. This is a closer, closer view of the actual area being vacated. Next slide, please. Another one looking south. And the next slide, please. And this shows the end of the cul-de-sac and as the, if the cul-de-sac was to be continued, it would go to Southwest Mead, but this is, shows one more example of how it would be economically and somewhat physically impossible to extend Southwest Third into South, up to Southwest Mead because of the topography, the existing topography. A sidewalk in a street area would not meet city standards for slope. And the next slide, please. The Planning and Sustainability Commission held a hearing on March 24 and recommended approval. Next slide, please. And this is a depiction of the proposed new office building to be constructed. This street vacation benefits the city with increased investment in the city's infrastructure, its tax base, and additional employment opportunities, and fosters the citywide goals of density and economic activity. And the two director butters, the Lair Hill condominium and the commercial owner of the building across the street have filed letters of support in support of this petition. And that concludes my presentation. Here to answer any questions for you, and the petitioner, Benjamin Eater, is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Did anybody sign up for public testimony on this item, please?
No one signed up, Commissioner.
Thank you. This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance that passes the second reading. Thank you for your thorough presentation. And with that, I will turn the gavel over to Mayor Wheeler.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. I appreciate your stepping in this morning while I was busy with other things. So Carla, it's my understanding we have not done the consent agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Have any items been pulled?
Yes, item 626.
626 has been pulled. Please call the roll on the remainder of the consent.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Youdaly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the consent agenda is approved. We'll move 626 to the end of the agenda. Next item is item 620 time certain proclamation.
Proclaim July 26, 2020 to be Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary Day.
Colleagues, today we celebrate the 30th anniversary of a truly milestone civil rights law known as the Americans with Disabilities Act, or the ADA. Since then, it has transformed the national dialogue on the inclusion of people with disabilities in employment. According to OHSU, about 1 in 5 adults in the Portland metro area identifies having a disability. At the city of Portland, the ADA serves as a foundation for our disability equity work. Two years ago, the Disability Employment Program launched in the Bureau of Human Resources, which proactively works to develop disability-inclusive employment policies and processes. It also manages our Project Search internship program, which was started by the late Commissioner Fish and the upcoming Access to Work program, which will both begin anew in 2021. The ADA Title II program in the Office of Equity and Human Rights was created to assist the city in building equitable and accessible community services. And the Adapt to Impact Team in the Office of Community and Civic Life hosts two disability community-oriented programs, the Disability Program and the Mental Health Program. The ADA is a remarkable accomplishment, and we honor the impact it's made over the last 30 years. The city of Portland will continue to carry forward the spirit of the ADA and proactively integrate disability and equity and justice for our employees and community members. With that, I'd like to introduce Ani Keenan from the Bureau of Human Resources. Ani, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everyone. My name is Ani Keenan, and I am the Disability Resources and Employment Specialist here at the city of Portland. I'm very thankful to have this opportunity to honor the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, or ADA. Because of the ADA and because of the hard work, my disability rate up to 5. Accessibility features that were very uncommon years ago, such as curb cuts on sidewalks or captions for television, are now part of our everyday lives. The ADA holds a lot of meaning for me, both personally as a woman with a disability, but also professionally in my work here at the city. I focus on Title I of the ADA, which is about employment. My job is to facilitate equitable employment policies, processes, and programs for job applicants and people and employees with disabilities. As mentioned by the mayor, two examples of the program that I've been working on are the Project Search internship program, which offers work experiences for people with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities. which offers work experiences for people with intellectual and/or developmental disabilities, as well as a new employment program called Access to Work, which will offer equitable entry-level job opportunities for people with disabilities who benefit from a longer learning and training period. Because of the pandemic, we were not able to offer these programs this year, but plan to do so in 2021. For Title II of the ADA, which mandates accessible and inclusive public services from local government, I would like to take a moment to recognize the work of my disability equity colleagues in the Office of Equity and Human Rights and in the Office of Community and Civic Life, particularly in their recent effort to support disability inclusion within the city's emergency coordination center. I'd also like to recognize the full-time ADA Title II staff in the Portland Bureau of Transportation and in Portland Parks and Recreation. 30 years of the ADA as a law has produced much-needed changes and improved access for people with disabilities, both nationally and here in Portland. That said, there are many opportunities for the city of Portland in the future to build on both the law and spirit of the ADA in advancing disability equity, particularly for people who have multiple or intersectional identities, such as Black Indigenous and people of color with disabilities, refugees and immigrants with disabilities, and/or people who are part of the LGBTQIA and cis-tiered community. There's still a lot of important and great work to be done in this area, and I look forward to being part of that. So, I thank you to everyone for your time today and for honoring this moment. And I now like to turn it over to Allen Heinz, a community member and staffer at Real Choice Initiative Oregon.
Thank you, Ani.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the invitation to speak about the Americans with Disabilities Act, 30 years since its passage. My name is Allen Heinz, and I am the Housing Access Director at Community Vision, an organization that supports people with disabilities to live self-determined lives in the community. I also lead Real Choice Initiative, an advocacy and education organization. 2020 provides a striking context for commemorating a civil rights law. The protests over the police killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Tony McGate make it clear that reality can remain incongruous with the intent of such laws, racism, ableism, and other forms of oppression cannot be legislated away. I grew up with a path paved for me by Louis Curtis, Brad Lomax, and John Lacy, as well as community-led actions like the Capitol Crawl and the sit-in at the San Francisco Federal Building. I am here to commemorate that history, and I intend to stay true to it in my remarks today. We have not arrived at an accessible society, one which accounts for and readily accommodates adversity in how bodies and minds function. The ADA generation was promised much more than what reality has borne out. So, as I acknowledge the courage and tangible results of my forbears, I would be absolutely missing the point of the work they committed their lives to if I failed to stress that our community needs more. The successes of the ADA represent a stunning break from a time when institutionalization was the norm for people with severe disabilities. As a member of the ADA generation, I have always been able to use mass transit, go to the movie theater, and get appropriate schooling. Indeed, I cannot imagine the injustice of not having access to them. I was mainstream throughout my K-12 schooling. I accessed vocational rehabilitation services, and I obtained a college degree. I credit this success to Title II and Title III of the ADA. Access to public accommodations and nondiscrimination in services are the most visible and most referenced effects of the law, but I know my privilege is a big part of what allowed me to access these services. Initially, my school superintendent advocated against my mainstream education, and VR initially refused to support my career choice in journalism. My family's white privilege was the force behind getting a proper individual education plan that allowed me to attend regular ed classes, and it was my own white privilege that got the newspaper reporter, equipped with a tape recorder and notepad, to attend a crucial meeting with VR to tip the balance of power in the situation. Ultimately, though, privilege is not always enough to ensure compliance with federal law. Three years into my journalism degree, I ran up against a professor who refused to make the accommodations necessary for me to complete my coursework. Because the course was required for the degree, I was forced to change my program of study to political science. After graduating, the hunt for full-time paying work lasted for 11 years. So, alongside the advances, let's recognize that another impact of the ADA is that we, people with disabilities, have to work for every opportunity that comes our way as a result of the law, and those of us at the intersections of oppression have to work exponentially harder. Yes, the Olmsted decision, which was a product of the ADA, gave us the right to decide whether we live in an institution or in the community, but no housing was created to meet the needs of our community as a result of that decision. The benchmark for the number of accessible units in multifamily housing remains 5%. This is at a time when the CDC estimates that 1 in 4 people in the US has a disability, and more than 13% has a mobility disability. Finding accessible and affordable housing continues to be an issue in our community. Locally, Real Choice Initiative and other organizations have been pushing for the implementation of the expanded rental registration program, and I am aware that program has been put on hold as Housing Bureau funds were shifted to pandemic response programs. We need to know where accessible rentals are in the city, and the registration system would help. Yes, Title I of the ADA zeros in unemployment and explicitly prohibits discrimination based on disabilities, but proving discrimination is notoriously difficult, and reasonable accommodation is rarely covered in employee orientation. And yes, people with disabilities are more visible today than ever before, but that doesn't mean we're respected or treated equally under the law. In 2007 and again in 2012, the Department of Justice found Portland police frequently used more force against people with disabilities, including mental illness and addictions. The situation continues today. My generation has grown up with the promise of being welcomed by society as people with disabilities. My generation has also witnessed the effects of militarized policing and divestment from social services. Holding these realities together is how I want to commemorate the 30th anniversary of the ADA. People with disabilities need more. People of color with disabilities need more.
Thank you, Allen. Thank you, Ani. And before we move on to the reading of the proclamation, Commissioner Hardesty, you had a comment. And if any of my other colleagues would like to speak, that would be a good time to do it. Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Allen, for your very heartfelt testimony. One of the things I'd like to say is all of us are temporarily able, right? Because throughout most people's lives, at some point or another, they encounter some personal experience that reduces their abilities. And, you know, sometimes it's for a short time, sometimes it's for a long time. This is absolutely, I want to applaud and appreciate the 30th anniversary. And, Allen, I want you to know that you are absolutely right. We need to do much better. We need to have more housing that's accessible for people with disabilities. We need to make sure that we are monitoring our progress. We need to make sure that accessibility is something that is just in the DNA of the city of Portland, and we have not done that as of yet. But I am absolutely confident that me and my colleagues are renewing our commitment to ensuring that everyone in the city of Portland can live a prosperous, productive life. If the racial drumbeat that we've been hearing about equality is to mean anything, it must mean that everybody in our community has access to equal opportunity, whether that's in housing, education, employment, et cetera, et cetera. We have a long way to go, but people like you and the disability rights groups that we have in Oregon have helped us come a long way. And just like I will say for the African-American community, though we can see we've come a long way, we still have an incredibly long way to go before we can honestly say that we have created an equitable society. And so, thank you, Mayor, for bringing this proclamation. Thank you for the testimony. And thank you for reminding us that we have an obligation to make sure that this is a city where everybody can prosper. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Then Commissioner Eider, Commissioner Fritz, then Commissioner.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for being here. I remember being, I think we did the 21st anniversary. We had a major celebration at Portland State University. I think it was the 21st rather than the 20th. And it was really meaningful to be in the presence of greatness, the people who are still pushing. And because we all acknowledge we have a lot of work to do. So, thank you to Ani, in particular, for your work coordinating with the staff in the Office of Equity and Human Rights and in the Office of Community and Civic Life. I appreciate you giving the acknowledgement that there is good work being done. It's still a small but mighty band of specialists within the city of Portland's staff. And we need to continue to focus on making employment and the good jobs that the city has more available to folks. I also need to note that people experiencing mental illnesses are also people with disabilities, and that more needs to be done in that regard. And I appreciate that Commissioner Hardesty is amending her ballot measure this afternoon to reflect the particular needs of people with mental health challenges with regards to police accountability. So, there's many, many things we need to do. There's also the ballot measure that I'm sponsoring that will provide more accessibility for water bureau properties if it passes. And I'm just thinking of all of the parks that we've opened over the past 10 years and the features that used to be considered optional are now just standard, that we wouldn't think of having a swing set that doesn't have a fully accessible swing on it, for example. And that the surfaces are such that everybody can use them. And indeed, I believe our parks are further evidence that when we look after everyone in our community, that everybody benefits. And there are, there's multiple benefits to the accessibility improvements that have been made. And so, I just appreciate all of the work that's been done, and I appreciate those of you who will be continuing the work moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Uday Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for your comments today. As a disability advocate and the parent of a child with a disability, I wanted to take this moment to share a few reflections. I know that many people look at my family and feel pity. They can't imagine the path we're on and the challenges we face. They don't think that they could rise to the challenge themselves. I know this because people frequently tell me as much, and I kind of wish that they wouldn't. So, I want to let them know and everyone listening today know that I wouldn't trade my son or the experience of being his mother for the world. It's not his disability, his health challenges, the multiple surgeries he's been through, or the months that we've spent in various hospitals at his bedside, that is the real challenge to my family. These are simply immutable realities of his life, and we are here to support him and live through them with him. It's living in a community, in a society, in a world that's not ready or willing to welcome and include him. Whether it's the challenges we face, simply trying to navigate city sidewalks that lack curb cuts, the fact that he was never able to attend our neighborhood schools because 50% of Portland schools are inaccessible in one or more critical area, the lack of affordable, accessible housing, or the fact that so few of our public amenities are truly inclusive and accessible. That's the real tragedy of our experience as a family. I am grateful to the activists and advocates who fought for decades to advance disability rights, and I'm committed to fighting alongside them for the rest of my life. And I'm appreciative of the work that the city of Portland has done in this arena as well. And I'm committed to pushing the city to do more and not take 30 more years to start meeting the basic requirements of ADA. But I want to be clear, I'm not proud that it took a lawsuit to compel the city and PBO to accelerate their work on our pedestrian infrastructure, in particular, the thousands of curb cuts that we are lacking across the city that make it unsafe and sometimes impossible for people in wheelchairs or with other mobility challenges to simply walk down the street and get to where they need to go, like everyone else in our community does. I'm not satisfied with a handful of playgrounds where kids with disabilities can enjoy truly inclusive, accessible recreation. And I'm frustrated that 30 years after the ADA, that City Hall is not truly accessible or inclusive to people with disabilities, whether it's our website or the way that we provide accommodations. We need to do better. Finally, I want to end by highlighting the intersection of disability and race. It's a timely subject. When the city talks about equity, we primarily focus on race. And often, when I raise the issue of disability, I'm greeted with polite smiles and blank stares. But I want to make it clear that the intersection of race and disability is a particularly brutal intersection. The Black community experiences higher incidence of disability. They experience higher incidence of police violence. And while we do not have adequate, complete data, what we do have suggests that a third to half of people killed by police experience some type of disability, whether it's physical, cognitive, neurological, or a mental health issue. Those are some grim statistics, and it means that people in the Black community who experience disability are among some of our most vulnerable community members, not just to police violence, but in virtually every arena. So, I really want to push the city to elevate the conversation around disability when we talk about equity and justice. Finally, I want to encourage everyone who's interested in this topic to watch Crypt Camp, an amazing documentary that came out earlier this year about one single camp in, I think, upstate New York that was the incubator for multiple amazing disability activists who really changed our country and the world for people with disabilities. And if you want to learn more, you could also check out Alice Wong's Disability Visibility Project and Judy Humann, that's H-U-E-M-A-N-N, to learn more about this decades-long movement and the challenges that people with disabilities still face today in equitable access to education, housing, jobs. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this proclamation, and happy anniversary to ADA.
Thank you, Commissioner Uday Lee, and thank you for a particularly powerful statement. Without further ado, assuming I can see it, I will read this incredible proclamation on behalf of the Portland City Council and indeed, the entire city. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was signed into law by President George H.W. Bush on July 26, 1990. And whereas, the ADA is a landmark anti-discrimination law protecting the civil rights of people with disabilities and facilitating their access to employment services from state and local governments and services from private businesses. And whereas, Portland recognizes that people with disabilities are diverse, whose disabilities can be visible and/or invisible, and who reflect many stories, truths, and voices, including those of Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Latino, Asian, and Pacific Islander people with disabilities. And whereas, the city of Portland strives to uphold and practice its core values of anti-racism, equity, transparency, collaboration, communication, and fiscal responsibility in support of employees and community members with disabilities alike. And whereas, the city of Portland is committed to being a model employer for disability communities and has established the Disability Employment Program, a Project Search internship program, and the Access to Work program to provide equitable employment experiences for job applicants and employees with disabilities. And whereas, the city of Portland works to empower disability communities through the ADA Title II program in the Office of Equity and Human Rights, ADA Title II coordinators, and Adapt to Impact's disability program and mental health program in the Office of Community and Civic Life. And whereas, Portland celebrates 30 years of increased inclusivity and accessibility for disability communities while recognizing that continued action is necessary to achieve the full promise of disability equity and justice. And whereas, the city of Portland shall continue to identify and implement solutions to improve disability equity within our workforce and community. Now, therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2020, to be Americans with Disabilities Act 30th Anniversary Day, and call upon the residents of the city of Portland to observe this day. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Next item on our agenda, Carla, is item number 621, please.
Amend planning and zoning code to extend the expiration date for some land use approvals, maintain inclusionary housing rates outside the central city and gateway plan districts, and allow for virtual neighborhood contact meetings.
Thank you, colleagues. We will take our final vote on the expiration date extension project this morning. Are there any questions before we call the roll? And we have Sandra Wood here from VPS to answer any questions that you may have. Commissioners, any further questions? Hearing no further questions, I'm hopeful that my colleagues would be willing to adopt an emergency clause that would make this ordinance effective on Monday, August 10, 2020. Specifically, the ordinance would read in section two, "The council declares that an emergency exists because delay would result in additional land use reviews becoming expired. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect on August 10, 2020." Can I get a motion to add the emergency?
So moved.
Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Artiste seconds the addition of the emergency clause. Any discussion on the emergency? Carla, please call the roll on the amendment to add the emergency clause.
Artiste?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. So therefore, the amendment passes, the emergency clause is added. So the effective date for this proposal, if it's adopted, just to reiterate, would be August 10, 2020. Any further discussion before we call the roll on the main motion that's amended? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Artiste?
I just want to really appreciate the staff and the questions and the conversation we had on this topic. I was not in favor until I heard some of the compelling arguments about why this was the right thing to do, especially based on where we are economically in the City of Portland. And so I am very happy to vote aye and support it as an emergency. I vote aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thanks to Sandra Wood and other staff who've worked on this. You know, we're having to adapt a lot of different things with the COVID pandemic, and this is just another example. Aye.
Wheeler?
Because of COVID-19, we're all living in a time when extenuating circumstances now appear to be the rule rather than the exception. We must continually find ways to adopt and evolve as we navigate these uncharted paths that we've all collectively been forced to take. I'm extremely grateful to the bureau staff for offering a solution to the interruption of the city's development review because of the pandemic. While four weeks may not seem like such a long time period in the big picture, I know that each and every day adds time and stress to applicants. I want to thank J.P. McNeil, Sharon Bueno, Sandra Wood, Joe Zender, and Donnie Olivera in particular. Also, a thank you to PBO's Kurt Friger and BDS's Rebecca Esau and Kimberly Talent for your efforts. Thank you to Lindley Reese and Lauren King for their guidance throughout these hearings and making sure that what we do is completely legal. That's always a good thing. I want to thank those who took the time to meet with the city bureau staff and with my staff. It speaks volumes in terms of how committed you all are to help us solve this significant problem. Lastly, I know we're all being asked to go above and beyond to accomplish the goals that we have before us. It's not an easy task by any means, and I admire how everyone continues to be willingly and enthusiastically engaged to do what's necessary to be done to keep our city moving forward. I want to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work that's required of our city staff, our state, and our agency partners, construction crews, and developers to adapt during this pandemic. Thank you to our development review staff and customers for adhering to the three W's. Watch your distance, wear a face covering, and wash your hands often and well. Please continue to remember and follow these three W's so that we can continue to process these applications, visit these sites, and celebrate new groundbreakings in a healthy and safe manner. I'm very pleased to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, is amended. Thank you, everybody, for your terrific work on that. Good teamwork. Next up, we go to the regular agenda. I believe 628 is next up.
authorize intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with Oregon Department of Transportation to define roles and responsibilities regarding the use of real property for construction of public improvements related to the central systematic signals and illuminations project.
Commissioner Udaley?
I'm sorry, I'm a little lost. I thought the next item would be different. Which item number are we on?
62A. This is an intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with ODOT.
628. Oh, okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I had moved on to bike share already. So this is the right-of-way service agreement. This right-of-way services agreement is for a project that will design and build improvements at key intersections to improve safety on six major transportation corridors in northeast Portland and two major transportation corridors in southeast Portland. Here to provide details and answer any questions is PBO Capital Projects Manager, Darren Schenker. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Mayor. This is just a follow-up. Just confirm if you can hear me.
Yes.
So at the time, we signed the original IGA was in December of 2018. And at the time, we were unaware of the right-of-way obligations. Again, so this is an all-roads transportation safety measure, an arts project partnership with ODOT. Now, we have defined the right-of-way obligations, and we just need the Rousa, the Right-of-Way Service Agreement, to be signed so we can move forward with this project. And again, just to confirm, this is, the IGA has already been signed in December 2018.
Very good. And Darren, does that conclude your presentation on this item?
Correct. Does.
Is there any public testimony on this item, Carla?
No one registered, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Udaley, anything else before we call the roll? Very good. Carla, please call the roll.
Artiste?
I love short, succinct, and detailed presentations. Thank you very much. I vote aye.
Udaley?
Yes, if only every item was this straightforward. Thanks for being here today, and thank you to staff that worked on this. I am excited about these safety improvements, and I vote aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Darren. Next up, 629 we did, so 630, please. Oh, and Carla, if you could read 631 with us. We'll do them together.
Certainly. 630, authorize contract with Lyft, Inc. to operate, procure, and install system components of a bike-share system in an amount not to exceed $11,300,000. And 631, authorize agreement with Nike, Inc. to extend its sponsorship of Portland's bike-share system.
Commissioner Udaley?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we heard this item last week, and I heard some public testimony that was surprising and a little bit concerning to me. And so I, upon the advice of Commissioner Fritz, held it over to this week. And I'm pleased to say that I've gotten all my questions answered, and I hope that we will move forward on these items today. I will just speak to some of the concerns. One, I'm going to chalk some of this up to just the challenges of communicating and coordinating during this shutdown. Public engagement is a little more challenging. And honestly, engaging with me is probably a little more challenging because I have more work on my plate than ever. And despite frequent briefings from PBO, I just didn't have the information I needed in the moment to speak to some of the concerns raised by community. So I'll do that now. When we presented, or PBO presented, this contract before negotiations began to the back and didn't receive any follow-up questions, is my understanding. We wouldn't typically go back and forth between the bicycle advisory committee while we're negotiating a contract. And while we did have the option to bring someone from the back into the negotiations, we chose to have an individual representing Apano and East Portland in those conversations. I don't want to sound unappreciative, but I feel like a certain segment of the bicycle advocate population has been heard loud and clear for a very long time in the city. And because our goal with this new bike-share rollout was to serve underserved communities and roll it out in East Portland, we really wanted to hear from advocates from those communities. So second, there was a question as to why we weren't keeping non-e-bikes as well as e-bikes. We heard that it would be more expensive to retrofit the current bikes than the bikes are worth. And I learned, in addition to that, that there's challenges with the docking station. So it would be extraordinarily expensive for us to have both e-bikes and non-e-bikes, and that wasn't something that the vendor offered anyway. We see in other cities that do have a hybrid e-bike, non-e-bike system, that the e-bikes are vastly preferred by riders. And, you know, again, in our efforts to deliver a more equitable system and help people get where they need to go and go further on these e-bikes, we made that decision that we would switch to an e-bike system. And then finally, the cost for rides. You know, e-bikes are more expensive, and the bike-share program is growing. We have extraordinary partnerships with Nike and Lyft that really do help us keep those costs down, but it was necessary to increase rates. And the only kind of remaining concern I have is whether we've gotten the Bikes for All Low-Income Program right, and we can continue to look at that and adjust as needed. So I'm very satisfied. Thank you to staff for bearing with me. I know that was an awkward moment also to Lyft and Nike. And I'm ready to move forward. So I have staff here. If any of my colleagues have questions. Otherwise, we don't have public testimony since this is a second reading, and we can take our vote.
Commissioner Udaley, this is Commissioner Artiste. I do have one question, and it is really around the significant cost increase. What are we going to do to monitor to make sure that our efforts to serve underserved communities aren't diminished by the significant increase in cost?
Commissioner Udaley, would you like me to answer that question?
Yeah, I'm going to leave that to Catherine.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And that may want to add a little bit, or Roshan may want to add a little bit as well. Commissioner, we have both set up or in the process of setting up a series of check-in meetings with the advisory bodies that we'll be working with moving forward. But we are also really making a concerted effort to partner with organizations that serve culturally specific populations in the city. And we will continue to monitor the performance of the system through our close partnerships with them. We'll be increasing the number of those partnerships through a program that Irene Marion has put together, which we're calling our Frontline Community Partnerships Program. And one part of that work will be engaging for some of the organizations with their use of BikeTown and understanding what's working and what isn't. We'll also be doing just more straight-up community engagement around surveys of people who are and aren't using it. And then, we mentioned this last week, but I think it's us just really highlighting that part of the negotiated funds that come to the city as part of the system are dedicated throughout the life of the contract to increase the access of BikeTown for All, the access of the BikeTown for All program. So not only are we committed to continuing that program in its current form, but to expanding it. And we'll actively continue to look for additional resources beyond that to buy down the cost, working through our transportation wallet program with affordable housing providers and other programs and partnerships.
Thank you for that, Catherine. On that same note, while I appreciate working with BIPOC community-led organizations, what we know is that less than 10% of people are connected to any formal organization. And so that leads me to believe that most people will not have access to additional information. I believe in this program, and I personally love the electric bike. But I wasn't concerned until last week where we talked about the significant cost increase. And so does the partnership mean that people, these organizations are going to get access at a greatly reduced price? What does a partnership look like with BikeTown and organizations led by people of color?
I thank you for the question. I am actually going to ask Roshan Kurian to speak to that, if she's on. I don't see her name on my screen. I can answer it, but since Roshan is the person who has those direct partnerships, I'd love for her to speak a little bit to how they've worked.
And Roshan is here.
I'm here, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes. Roshan, if you could answer, just from the experience that you've had, that would be great. Thanks.
Sure. I think one thing that's worth noting is kind of the marketing and social media reach that Nike and BikeTown has and Lyft has really cultivated. And there's a lot of groups that really gather there. And so showing up for, you know, Black Girls Do Bike events, bringing bikes there, showing up for Juneteenth, bringing bikes there. I think part of it is we just need more people that look like the folks that we're trying to work with and developing those relationships and showing up for those events and those conversations. And so I think as we're kind of diversifying all of the staff that is included in the BikeTown network, it kind of happens in this grassroots way. But then beyond that, with the organizations, to answer your question specifically, the organizations that, with, like through SCI, through PCRI, and some of the other folks that we've got, through ERCO, Africa House, that we've already done focus groups and done a lot of work in. I think that those communities are, we see a large representation there. And then beyond that, we have reach that we're trying to create within businesses as we're stretching out. And so I think that, just trying to find different ways to connect to folks, not just through organizations. I appreciate Commissioner Artiste pointing that out. And I have heard just finding kind of the unusual, I don't want to say suspects, but the unusual players. And I'm dedicated to that work. I think the rest of our team across ATS is really dedicated to that work, and we're really collaborative about the people we connect to. And I think we have a really great opportunity working with PPS and our Safe Routes to School to connect to youth and using some of our programs, like Transportation Ambassadors, and kind of not being the only voice, but finding other folks to stretch our voice and our resources right now and through their own voice. And so that's kind of how I'm viewing it right now. And then as far as the discounted rates for BikeTown for All, you know, right now, we're in a system where we can rebalance, and it's almost free, right? And so hoping to work towards regaining that. But, you know, there's a transition process. There's a new system that has to be put in place. So I think the $20 a month, especially during the winter months, you know, we'll be able to monitor what's happening there. And we get direct feedback. We have direct phone lines. We have, you know, emails that are constantly being monitored. And I hear it when something is not going right. And that could just be through that direct call or now we'll have at Adaptive, Adaptive has agreed to, to kind of house the Bike Town for All workshops and provide that point because right now we're not able to have that in-person connection. So I feel like that will help at least to, to have a point to go to and refer to in case people need help. And then the $20 free ride credit every month. You know, we'll be able to, to see how that's being used and if it's, if it's enough or, or what, because that transfers, I think, to 20, 20-minute rides. Is that right? Is that correct? Steve, I don't know. Do you want to chime in?
It can be used, it could be used. That's just to give an example of how it could be used, but it's a credit, so could use that for just for total of, of that value.
Just to give an idea, right, of how, what it transfers to.
Commissioner Hardisty, I think, has a follow-up.
I, I'm just curious, how do people know that this $20 credit is available? A month credit is available?
So that would be Commissioner Hardisty through the Bike Town for All program. So that would be, that would just, when they are signed up, that would just, there's, once they are members, then it just happens on their account. They don't have to put in any promo code or anything. It's just automatic.
Someone talk about, oh, sorry.
No, I, I was just gonna say, again, I am 100% in support of this program. I think my only heartburn is whether or not we are gonna leave behind the people that we're expanding the program to help, right? If the cost is going up that significantly. I, I guess the question is, I would be very interested, I don't know, in about six months of data, you could come back to us in, in six months and tell us what you've learned in this new contract. And then maybe what adjustments we might need to make if we in fact are missing the opportunities to really get folks who, like me, who don't see themselves as a bicyclist, who all of a sudden may see themselves as a bicyclist. I, I think it, this program could help us maintain the clean air that we've had since the pandemic began. And so I want to see it be successful. And the only, my only heartburn is whether or not we are creating a barrier for the folks that we want to expand Bike Town to. So I, I guess we will all be in this together for the next six months to figure out what's working and what isn't. But I have absolute confidence in the staff that's running this program to make sure that we are focused on making sure we're getting underrepresented communities the opportunity to explore the city anew in a different way on a bicycle. I think that's going to be very cool. I appreciate all of you being here today and taking time to answer these questions. I was a total go last week and then all of a sudden I heard things that I had questions on. So thank you very much. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Udeli.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I share some of the concerns expressed. I am a big fan of both Bike Town or Bike Share for All, Bike Town for All and the Adaptive Bike Program, which I want to see us expand and improve. Probably a quarter of our residents, up to a quarter of our residents could qualify for the discounted program. We don't have the exact numbers, but just going off what I know about our kind of local stats. We've made it really easy to join and I'm proud of that because people who are already experiencing challenges don't need to be forced to jump through a bunch of hoops to get a, a benefit or support that they need and they're entitled to. That said, like, I'm frankly interested in making it available to more people because I think our qualifying criteria is too low. When we're, we're attaching, like, for instance, anyone with a SNAP card would qualify. And we can assume that that person probably doesn't make any more than 200% of the federal poverty level. Well, the federal poverty level is based on the cost of a loaf of bread in 1960. It's a completely irrelevant antiquated measure for poverty when the, you know, rents and education and health insurance have exponentially increased and the loaf of bread is still, you know, four bucks, I guess. So I just wanted to say that. And one last thing, could someone speak to the Transportation Wallet? Because that's a program that I'm really proud of and I hope that we're gonna continue expanding it and, and the benefits that come to low-income residents through that Transportation Wallet.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. I am going to ask Roshan to speak specifically to the details of the wallet because last year she ran an extensive pilot program working with affordable housing providers. And I would love to have her share some of that. And I guess before I turn it over to her, the one other thing I would like to say is we will be as staff, and this speaks to Commissioner Hardisty's question as well, looking for every opportunity we can possibly find to bring more resources to the system, both in public-private partnerships and in grants. We would greatly appreciate if you all here are things we ought to be pursuing. Certainly send those our way as well. And, and it will be a real focus of ours to try to do just that. Expand the subsidy that we can give throughout the system. But with that, Roshan, would you speak to the wallet?
Sure. So I'll, I'll just start out by saying that the program that I've been running is kind of branched off from an original Transportation Wallet program that our colleague Sarah Goforth is running in parking districts. And so from that, we realized that we're not covering the rest of the city and not covering folks living on low income. And that was how the Affordable Housing Pilot was born. And then we worked with seven housing organizations. We had spoken to kind of our, our common folks that, that we knew of and then put out a letter of interest and got seven organizations that had the capacity to partner with us. They have resident coordinators that work in each building that were able to help us deliver these wallets. And so how we did that, if they live in those buildings, they automatically, automatically qualify. And then we held transportation fairs at each of the locations. We did seven fairs at least at the, the different locations onsite. We brought all the service providers, you know, folks from Lyft, Lyft folks from Bike Town. Triment was there, you know, so we had all of them show up at this transportation fair. People gave us their information. We gave them a prepaid debit card because we found from our initial outreach that folks were either unbanked, underbanked, or afraid to associate their limited income cards to TNCs and so forth. So we created a partnership with US Bank and working through our Treasury to, to put $300 on this card that we distributed to each household. And so that allowed each household to share that money amongst their family and, and use it for different services. And so at the fairs, they were able to learn how to sign up through the app or whatever else. And we're already pre-qualified for the low-income programs for the scooter companies. They also received credits from our TNC group for Uber and Lyft, a radio and Broadway credit in addition. And our Bike Town for All program was kind of built into this as well because they already qualified for that. And that was an additional benefit that they received for a year membership. And so now through the parking district, Sarah also, you know, has recognized that there's affordable housing in the two parking districts. So she's created a kind of a similar but simultaneous program for, for those folks. And so we're trying to figure out how to make the whole Transportation Wallet family kind of, you know, be able to expand and try to bring a digital component to it, plan for a way that possibly our coordinators or other staff could sign folks up. And we're able to get that information. We don't have, we're, we're doing everything very analog right now. And I'm lettering, you know, we're, we're doing like printing and just like, everything is very analog. So trying to figure out how to move that program into a scalable thing is where we're at right now. But collecting a lot of really good data on how folks are moving around prior to COVID and also right now. So I'd be happy to share that once we have that available.
Great, thank you.
Very good. And Carla, these items were continued, so we've already completed public testimony. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. We took testimony last week.
Very good. And is there any further council discussion or any further questions before we call the roll on these two ordinances? I'm seeing nobody, no takers. Very good. Carla, can you please call the roll on item 630?
Hardisty.
I just want to thank the incredible staff at PBOT for the incredible work they did, both in renegotiating a new contract, looking at making access easier for other folks who don't traditionally see themselves as bike riders. I want to thank Nike for stepping up once again to sponsor this program. We would not be able to do it without Nike's continued support. And last but not least, I want to thank Commissioner Udeli for her leadership and making sure that this new contract really reflects the values of this city council. I cannot think of a better project to be voting on this morning than what we're voting on right now. And let me just say that I am very pleased with this. I want to continue to work with PBOT to make sure that we are increasing access and not limiting access based on the things that we've discussed today and last week. But you have my overwhelming enthusiastic support for moving forward. I vote aye.
Udeli?
Well, once again, thank you everyone for bearing with me last week and for your patience. I'm really excited about this kind of new phase of the Bike Share program and the progress we're making towards a more equitable and accessible system for all Portlanders with both introducing e-bikes and expanding, expanding our deployment into East Portland. I'm going to keep pushing on Bike Town for All as well as the Adaptive Bike Program, which it's, it's a great start, but it's nowhere near equitable access for people with disabilities. So we'll continue to work on that. And finally, I just want to thank everyone who testified last week, especially our invited community partners who spent their time and talent with us to design a more equitable sys- system and program. And I also want to thank, it's a long list, Chris Warner, Steve White-McBeth, Catherine Chiarlo, Roshan Kurian, Lior Schweitzer, Wiley O'Neil, Sarah Goforth, Liz Horman, and Brianna Orr from PBOT for this work, for their work on this item. I just feel so lucky to be your commissioner and get to work with the amazing teams at PBOT. So thank you. And finally, thank you to Jamie Duhamel and Marshall Wemple in my office for their support. And of course, Nike for their continued partnership and sponsorship. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Well, thanks to all of those staff in transportation that Commissioner Udeli just thanked. As I said last week, I was a bit skeptical and was prepared to vote for it because of the respect I have for each one of you. So good work. Thank you, Commissioner Udeli, for taking the additional week to allow us all to, to think through the issues some more. And thank you to the reference from my, my behind-the-scenes work when we first got this program going. This was very reminiscent, actually, of the, the hearing that, that today and, and last week was very reminiscent of, of when we passed the program initially. And one of the nice things about this program is that it is adaptable in, in many ways, Commissioner Udeli. And that we can work things out as we go. With the proviso that it is, there are still safety concerns. And so I want, I need to correct what was asserted on the record by some in public testimony last week, that e-bikes are not any more dangerous than regular bikes. That is not only wrong, it is dangerous to assert that. There was a study where the authors analyzed emergency department data collected from 2000 to 2017 by the United States Consumer Product Safety Commission's National Electronic Injury Surveillance System. And yes, we have a National Electronic Injury Surveillance System. And this was on injuries involving three types of vehicles, e-bikes, regular bikes, and electric scooters. And all of those would be considered vulnerable road users who had the same challenges in infrastructure. People riding e-bikes were more likely to suffer internal injuries and be hospitalized compared with other riders. E-bike injuries were also more than three times as likely to involve a collision with a pedestrian than either scooter or traditional bike injuries, which the researchers reported in the journal Injury Prevention. And most significantly, the injuries that, the study found that injuries from e-bikes were more serious. This is particularly true for e-bikes versus pedestrian crashes. Several cities in China where e-bikes were the most popular mode of transportation have now banned them. And in particular, the studies have shown increased running at red lights by e-bikes or by e-bike riders, particularly, and this is what, here's a shock that wouldn't, won't shock anybody. Males over 40 are particularly likely to exhibit unsafe driving behavior on e-bikes. So it's just, it's ridiculous to assert that going 20 miles an hour without a helmet is a safe thing to do. And people need to respect these. Yes, yes, they are going to be easier to ride. They are also going to go faster. And, and people need to look out for the pedestrians. They need to look out for other road riders. And they need to look out for themselves by wearing a helmet. And I know, I appreciate Commissioner Udeli and I definitely share the, an understanding of, of the importance of traffic safety and, and road safety. And that means everybody, that means everybody needs to take responsibility, whether you're an e-bike rider, a regular bike rider, a scooter rider, a pedestrian, or a vehicle, motor vehicle driver. It's a shared responsibility in a shared public space. But with that, I am very happy to support this next step in the, in the program. And I vote aye.
Liler?
Well, I, I'm very enthusiastic about this. I guess I haven't hit it very well. First of all, I'm a huge fan of e-bikes. I think e-bikes open up an opportunity for people who previously would not have wanted to participate in the Bike Share program. It certainly improves mobility options for people. Here in our own office, here in the office of the mayor, rather than additional cars, we chose two e-bikes. They're heavily used under ordinary circumstances here amongst the members of our team. I've enjoyed using them. And I really believe that we will see a lot of people come into the fold of cycling who, without the e-bikes being present, would not do that. I also strongly support the expansion of the program into East Portland. I, I think this is an important and significant move. I'm glad to see that it's finally happening. And Commissioner Udeli, I want to thank you for your continued advocacy for the Adaptive Bicycling Program, the, the Adaptive Bike Town Program. We need to think about all of the people in our community as we move forward with this. And of course, everybody has mentioned the cost, the price to consumers. We're all mindful of that. I'm hopeful that as the technology is adapted, as we expand it, the cost to consumers will go down. And we need to continue to be mindful of our transportation goals around equity. And that's something that this council will continue to monitor very, very closely going forward. And then Commissioner Fritz, I, I just want to acknowledge everything you said on, on the health side. There, there are a couple of things I learned personally as, as I was taking up an e-bike in place of just an ordinary street bike. And the first is that if you are in a bike lane with an e-bike, it is highly likely you will be going much faster than the traffic that you are catching up to in the bike lane. And so we're going to have to continue to message to people to give fair warning that you're coming up. Don't pass people at ridiculous rate of speed. And remember that as an electric bike, you are in somewhat of a different situation than the manually pedaled bikes. And so that, that I think will be a learning process for people in the community. The second area is simply around the sheer weight of e-bikes. E-bikes weigh a lot more than a conventional bicycle. So Commissioner Fritz, it doesn't surprise me at all to hear that bicycle pedestrian interactions in particular tend to be more serious with e-bikes. interactions in particular tend to be more serious with e-bikes, just, I think by virtue of the speed combined with the weight of the e-bike. It really does require a higher level of diligence and really focusing on the moment. So I think those were useful and accurate admonitions that you put forward, plus they happen to be consistent with the data. But on the whole, I think this is great. I'm enthusiastically supportive, and I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Carla, please call item 631.
Hardesty.
Aye.
Udaley.
Again, just want to thank my colleagues for all their comments and for their support. In particular, thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for raising the issue of safety. I do remember someone suggesting that they weren't more dangerous, and simple cursory search on the internet of reliable sources indicate otherwise. So I just want to say that although the majority of bike riders who are injured in collisions with cars are using the streets safely and legally, and it's often the speed or distraction or intoxication of the car driver, Share the Road applies to bicycles as well, especially when it comes to pedestrians. And you, if you, when you hop on one of these new bikes, your bike, this bike is probably at least 10 pounds heavier than a typical pedal bike, and you'll go, be going faster in some areas. So I just want to strongly encourage people to be safe, wear a helmet, mindful of your surroundings, and yield the right of way to pedestrians just as you would if you were driving a car. I vote aye.
Fritz. Fritz.
Commissioner, you're muted.
Dang, I was launched into a really great speech, so thank you for pointing that out. Thank you to former Commissioner Steve Novick and his former chief of staff, Chris Warner, who is now the director of PBOT, for negotiating the initial agreement with Nike. And thank you, Commissioner Udaley, for continuing that agreement. And of course, Nike, thank you for that agreement. I do support the expansion into East Portland as a priority. I also note that there are people with low incomes in deep southwest Portland who do not have access to being able to get around the way that people, people in other parts of the city do. And indeed, that my part of deep southwest Portland is as far away from downtown as some of the furthest reaches of East Portland. So again, this is an iterative process, and I know that the staff will be looking to make it truly an all-city project. And I hope that also includes scooters for those of us who are not likely to ride a bike of any, of any, of any type. But anyway, thank you very much. Aye.
Wheeler.
So this is an extension of the contract with Nike. I want to thank Nike for their continued sponsorship of our Bike Town program. With, without Nike stepping up and being our partners and investing in this program, it wouldn't happen. So I want to extend my gratitude to Nike, to their leadership, to Julia Brim Edwards, to everybody at Nike who works on this community-facing component and their willingness to step forward, partner with the city of Portland. Thank you all. Thank you again, Commissioner Udaley. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Now, Carla, unless I'm mistaken, we have the one item pulled off the consent agenda left.
Correct, 626.
Very good. Please read 626.
Authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for the construction of the Palbute Reservoir One roof upgrades project at an estimated cost of $5,140,000.
Very good. Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Engineer Teresa Elliott is here to present on this item.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer, Portland Water Bureau. I'm here talking to ask council to authorize solicitation and payment for the construction contract for the Palbute Reservoir One upgrades. This project will remove the existing soil off the roof, install a new waterproof roofing system, some new concrete aprons around the perimeter openings, and add new drainage onto the, onto the roof to correct the waterproofing issue. Inspection of the Palbute Reservoir presented evidence that surface water was leaking into the concrete roof slab in Reservoir One. When Reservoir One was built originally, they did not require or have any kind of waterproofing material that was used at the time for the reservoirs. Oregon Health Authority has since added a requirement that roofs of water reservoirs that are drinking water reservoirs had to be watertight. The solicitation will be using city's formal competitive bid, competitive low bid process. Construction cost is estimated just at $5.1 million with a moderate confidence level. The subcontractor equity program will be used and has an aspirational goal of 20% of the hard construction costs for the subcontractor utilization of the co-bid firms. We're gonna encourage the contractors to attain 14% of the 20% using disadvantaged minority-owned and women-owned firms. Our project outreach is expected to begin later this summer prior to mobilization and will continue through the project's duration. Public involvement will include outreach to the park users, the nearby residences, businesses, and neighborhood associations and community organizations such as Friends of Palbute, Audubon Society, Johnson Creek Watershed Council, and other impacted city bureaus to provide advance notice of the construction activities. Most of the work is inside a fenced area and will not be affecting the park users. And with that, I'm here, as well as Jody Enman, the Design Principal Engineer, to answer any questions you have.
I believe this was pulled by Floyd Jones. Perhaps you want to hear that testimony? Good morning, Floyd.
Yes, Floyd did pull this. We can go ahead and let her speak. Gayla, thank you.
Good. Hi, Floyd.
Good morning. Yes, Floyd Jones speaking today on behalf of Friends of the Reservoirs. And we are the longest-running independent organization without any conflicts of interest unlike some of the utility boards that have been following all of these reservoir, these intertwined reservoir and treatment plant projects going back to 1989. We've been working on these issues for over 17 years. And what's not in the report, and it's always most significant, as this council and previous councils have seen over the last 10 years, it's not what they tell you, it's what they don't tell you that's most important, or important anyway. So in this report, what they're not telling you is just 20 years after Palbute One was constructed, one of the many, many contracts related to studying reservoirs and planning for all this, these big projects. It indicated that Palbute One needed to be replaced. It was problematic after just 20 years. And so, you know, open reservoirs are functional and prevent cancer-causing nitrification that scientifically documented by the EPA as only occurring in covered stories. Well, open reservoirs, they're functional for 120 years. But here, the MWH Global constructed Palbute One was problematic in the, the report done by CH2M Hill after just 20 years. So you've seen how all of these projects escalate, escalate, escalate. Over the last five years, you've seen it with, you know, the Willamette River Crossing, with Washington Park, Palbute Two itself, and of course, with the failure to tell you about the piping for this chemical dumping filtration plant. So again, I would just caution you to really pay attention to all of these projects and how they're going to escalate in the future.
Thank you, Floyd. And Carla, was there other public testimony on this item?
Dee White had requested her to speak, but she is not on the line.
All right, very good. Any further questions, Commissioners? Very good. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. It is not an emergency item. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance, it moves to second reading. And with that, Carla, that completes our business for this morning, correct?
That does, Mayor.
All right, very good. We are turned till 2:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.